We will call the meeting to order for a Wycomico County Budget Work Session Monday, May the 11th, 2020. The first item on the agenda is the Board of Education. Glad to have you all here today.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I will, of course, as we usually do, open the floor to the superintendent and allow you just to give us a brief overview. Of course, I think we've mentioned before that in the budget cycle with the Board of Education, we -- I don't think -- I'll let you go ahead. I'll let you go forward.
Okay. Well, good morning, Vice President Cannon and members of the council and members of the council who are on Zoom. We have a number of staff with us here this morning, and we have Vice President or Vice Chair Gene Malone of the Board with us here in person. I believe Mr. Fitzgerald, Chairman Fitzgerald, is on Zoom as well as other board members. And there are also other staff members on Zoom with us in case there are specific questions that they can assist with. But I want to start by just thanking you, as I have in the budget hearing recently, for your support in the past and indicate that our budget this year is a maintenance of effort budget, that is tightly aligned with our strategic plan. Hopefully, you saw that as you went through it. I also want to make sure that you know that the Board will be voting at their May meeting on a budget amendment. You may be familiar with that. And then immediately after that vote, we'll be sending that revised budget to Mrs. Hurley to share with you all. It is still a maintenance of effort budget. We learned very recently that the state would not be funding at the same level. It's hard to breathe through these masks.
Terrible. Terrible.
You need to stop and take a breath every now and then.
Thank you. I will. Lost my train of thought, but it is a maintenance of effort.
You're talking about the state of Maryland?
Thank you. Yes, the state was not funding our pre-kindergarten expansion grant the same level that they had previously and based upon the priority that we place on kindergarten readiness. We found a way to support that shortfall in the budget through year-end funds this year anticipating. And so that's coming in terms of an increase in revenue and a change in how we're expending those funds to support pre-kindergarten as we move forward. You also know that we submitted a list of one-time items to the council, and that one-time list was revised based upon our recent response from the Maryland State Department of Education. Hopefully, you have that revised list with you. I'll just go down very briefly with you and share that they did approve our request for laptop carts at Salisbury Middle that came in just over, I believe, $30,000 in terms of school safety, fencing at East Salisbury, North Salisbury, both Fruitland Schools, and choices at 96-720. And then an upgrade to -- from analog to HD for security cameras at several of our schools. I won't list all of those for you. At about $300,000. And then finally, the S2 doors, the safety locking doors that we didn't have in some of our buildings, and that's about $150,000. Mrs. Hurley did forward a list of a few questions from the council on Thursday evening, and I'm going to respond to those questions, and then we stand ready to answer any other questions that the council has. So the first request was for an itemized list showing what was referred to as subcategories of the categories shown in the proposed budget. Our full budget, if you -- do you all have copies of the budget, of our budget? Great.
Yes, thank you.
So you should recognize that in the full budget, we do show the category, the object, which is what I'm assuming was being referred to as the subcategory, and the line items.
Helen.
Helen.
If we could, we'll finish the presentation from Dr. Hanlon, and then the council can ask questions at any time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So you have that. You have that information. And you also recognize that the council's authority is at the category level. And in fact, when we have a budget transfer during any given year, we come to the council if it's from one category to another. So while you see the object and the line item level, those come under the authority of the elected Board and the superintendent. And then I believe that the question asked about specifically to the school level, that is not in the budget because that changes on any given day where we have specific needs of schools or departments. For example, if we have a textbook that we're using in a school and we have -- and we're using in the system, excuse me, a school may have a need based upon the enrollment, based upon the age of those textbooks. And so we move those funds as needed, and so that's not part of the budget document itself. The second question was, is there a report that shows the actual spending over the past two years? And yes, the budget document includes the spending expenditures, the actual budget from the past three years, in fact. Another place to see the actual spending is in our comprehensive annual financial report, which is in our -- on the transparency portal of our website. And that actually shows budget to actual. In fact, you can go into on our transparency portal, you can go into the actual month-to-month financial statements that show the spending every month. So that's easily found. And then the third question, this council person asked if we could answer all of Mr. Lombardo's questions from the budget meeting. And so in response, I'm just going to share that all of what is asked is under the authority of the Board of Education. And I can assure you that we comply with the law, all of the legal proceedings that govern -- procedures that govern the acquisition of property. In fact, we have a Board of Education policy that governs that acquisition of property.
You'll send that to us. You'll -- I'm assuming that would be an email response to Mr. Lombardo's letter?
I can certainly do that.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Yep. So --
I have a question for you.
You're saying that that's a good word, education's question.
Is that, those are public documents, then, if Mr. Lombardo asks for them?
He would submit a Freedom of Information Act, which he's very familiar with, and we would answer that according to that, those legal procedures.
Was that on your website already?
Is what on our website, Mrs. Ackley?
The numbers that he's broken down?
No.
Okay.
So --
Is that the only thing we had to hear?
You okay? Go on.
She can actually -- Nicole, can you hear me?
I can hear you, yeah.
Can you turn down your volume on your computer just a tad bit?
Do I sound like God in there?
Yeah. Shook her out.
So, you know, just answering the question in general, and I think I've answered this to the council within the last month, that all of our one-time funding request costs are based on specific quotes. That's how we go through that procedure, or fixed-price items, or historical installation costs, as we have with the S2 doors. And all items are purchased under purchasing contracts. But we do have with us on our Zoom call, in case you want to know more about those procedures, our authority in that area, and that's Mr. Mark Miller. He is our purchasing manager. Mark, are you on the line?
Yes, I'm here.
Mr. Miller, are you? There you go.
Good morning. Good morning, Mr. Miller. Is he unmuted?
I'm muting and unmuting.
Okay. Mark, would you mind going through for the council just briefly what your procedure is that we follow according to the law?
No, we basically are following Maryland State Law 5112 and the Board of Education.
Mr. Miller, could I interrupt you? Do you have a TV on in the background or anything else?
No.
We're getting feedback in. I'm not sure.
Yeah, I had the same problem when I tried to call in.
Go ahead and continue. It may be in the -- in our end in the chambers. Thank you.
No problem. We're basically following 5112, which is Maryland law, as well as the Board of Education policies and procedures for acquisition of all goods and services.
I can't understand what he's saying.
Okay.
Hang on one second, Mr. Miller. Laura, I think that audio may be on over there. I think we have two on in here. We only need one. You have that. I mean, you can turn down -- this one's close. You may want to turn this one down. We'll take our audio from there.
Yeah, I did turn this one down.
You might have turned it all the way down, and then we'll just pick up audio from over there.
I think it's coming -- it's the speakers in the room.
But then we don't need it on the monitors, right? Mr. Miller, you have to do us a favor and allow us to do a mic check if you could continue to give your presentation.
No problem.
That's better. Much better.
Okay, it sounds like we're good.
Okay. Did you want me to start over, or were you able to hear?
Yes, thank you.
Basically, Wycomico County Public Schools follows Maryland State Law 5112, as well as our board policies and procedures. The board policies and procedures are on our website under Board Docs and are easily followed. We have categories of micro, small.
Hang on one second. We're going to interrupt you again. We have to find out which audio is going to be best, if this monitor is the best. Where's the audio coming from now?
The speakers in the ceiling.
And we have no control over this?
We can turn them down.
I'd say turn this down, turn this up. It sounds like a much better --
This was down already, I think.
I would turn this one up and kill the ceiling because the ceiling just isn't -- I don't think it's loud enough, Craig.
Right.
Is the ceiling off?
No, no, the back. The speakers in the back.
Let him talk to it and see what we got.
Go ahead, Mr. Miller.
Okay. Do I -- want me to start again? I'm not sure what you've heard what you're talking about.
Probably a countdown from 10 would help. We're trying to get the system -- we have feedback in the chamber itself, and we're trying to isolate which speakers we want to use. Can you turn those speakers down in the ceiling?
Yes.
Turn those down and leave that one up.
Okay.
That ought to work.
I got it. Have them talk.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Miller. Give us a --
Okay, I'll go 10, 9, 8, 7, 6.
Okay, just hit those. Cut those. We're getting there.
4, 3, 2, 1. Is that better, or you still need me to talk?
Just keep -- yeah, if you don't mind, give us the countdown again.
Thanks. Almost there.
No problem. 10, 9, 8, 7, 6, 5, 4, 3, 2.
Yeah, bring this one up a little more.
1.
If you could bring up some more, Craig, over here.
There's always going to be a little feedback because these mics are loud.
Mr. Miller, I think we're ready as we're going to get.
Better.
Thank you.
No problem. It's easy for me to count from 10 down. I know that very well.
Isn't our finance department --
You're all done.
He's in education. He doesn't do it.
Shot it up a little higher. I think we'll be -- go ahead, Mr. Miller. You can do it. Go ahead and start presentation 3.0.
No problem. Wycomico County Public Schools follows Maryland State Law 5112, as well as its board's policies and procedures. Our board policies and procedures can be found on our website under Board Docs. Basically, we have micro purchases, small purchases, and formal purchases. We try to create as many multiple -- as many contracts as possible. That way, we comply with the formal purchasing process all the way down through micro.
Two out. One bill out.
He muted it.
Were you going to continue on, Mr. Miller?
I wasn't sure what additional questions you had for me concerning the board policies.
Okay, all right. Thank you. We do have it in order here, so that's great.
Yeah, so if you have additional questions, I will send the policy. It's on the transparency portal under Board Docs, or it's actually under Board Docs. It's not in the transparency portal, but that's pretty easily found.
Your website and portal is extremely detailed. I mean, most of this is all answered right on the websites.
It is. And those questions, those bids, come before the Board of Ed, and the Board of Ed votes, and so we have a very formal process to make sure that we are following legal procedures for acquisition of property. Before I finish, I just want to let you also know that Mrs. Ashby is on the phone. I believe that you all decided to have a -- or are working on a separate work session for the capital improvement plan, and so you may not even want to get into that today. I don't have any prepared comments about the CIP, but she is on the Zoom call if you do have questions about the CIP. As I noted in my comments at the hearing, I do remain hopeful that this week, the IAC will grant us planning approval based upon Mr. Culver's documented support for the project in his letter to Mr. Goral, and then my continued conversations with state leaders very recently. So I'm hopeful this week.
Which project is that?
Regarding Mardella?
Mardella.
Mardella, I'm sorry. Thank you. Have Mardella on the brain and didn't say it out loud. So at this point, we're happy to answer any other questions that council members have about our maintenance of effort budget.
Any questions from any council members?
Yes, I have a few. So you're -- are you asking for these -- the appropriation for the additional items? Are you still asking for those?
Yes, and thank you for mentioning that, Mrs. Ackley, because actually, Mr. Culver did not include those in his budget, but we would ask that the council reconsider funding those items that are not -- they don't impact maintenance of effort.
Okay. So if that's what you're asking, then I think we need a little bit more information on coming up with the prices because as we had some citizens point out, with the laptop carts, we had a printout of an Amazon laptop cart for $400. So if these are the things that you're asking us to fund, I think we need some more information on the pricing and particularly what schools are going to --
The laptop -- well, the schools that they're going to are listed in the information that you have, so that's that, and we can certainly get you those bids that have been approved.
Are any of these going to Mardella?
Any of the one-time that remain in there?
Going to Mardella?
Going to say no off the top of my head, but give me a second? And I am assuming that that is because we're still very hopeful that we are reconstructing a school.
So any of the interior things, they're not going to Mardella either?
Correct.
Okay.
One thing I think it's important to point out when we're looking at technology items and others, we have very specific criteria and specifications for each of those items that our contract -- contracts work through. So items just off of Amazon may or may not meet the specifications that it would take to work with items that may go into schools and get heavy use, and items that are, you know, have to be of certain specifications to move from one area of the school to the other, or to be used for a variety of certain functions.
Thank you, Mrs. Scholfer.
So I think that would help, and we can certainly get those together for you so that you can see exactly the kinds of things that we list out that you may not find just, you know, Googling something or looking up on Amazon.
And I thank you, Mr. Stolper. I appreciate that. It's just that we had citizens that had emailed in on those specific topics.
Absolutely.
And I think it's our due diligence to make sure they're providing that information.
Right. And I would just remind you that those are items that are under the authority of the elected Board, and so I would encourage citizens who have questions to contact the Board.
Right, I'll also comment on that. Right, right. Those questions -- excuse me. Those questions need to be directed to the Board of Education.
Yes.
Not the Wycomico County Council.
Correct.
I thought that these items were something you were asking for above the maintenance of effort, the council had planned.
That is correct, but the actual process that we use to determine pricing is the authority of the Board of Education.
Okay. But, okay, well, that's -- thanks.
Are you planning any new hires, new positions in the coming budget?
Yes. There are -- if the thing that comes immediately to mind, Mr. Holloway, when you ask that question, well, two things still. There will now be a number of pre-K positions in our revised budget because that was being covered by the expansion grant. And I can't tell you off the top of my head, but I would imagine --
14.5.
14.5. 14.5 pre-K positions. And then the other thing that comes immediately to mind is based upon our efforts in the area of school safety and security, we've added a number of deans of students to our secondary schools. And that's how many?
7. I believe it's 7.
7. So those are the things that come immediately to mind. There may be a one or two positions, teaching positions, where they're needed in an individual school. I believe there's one at Salisbury Middle School.
As enrollments increased and also as we've expanded programs, really, those are the areas that we've added staff, whether it be through our pre-K initiative or our initiative for school safety. Those are the two main areas.
You know, in the years that we've gone through this budget process, people have asked a lot of questions. I've never heard the reason why questions couldn't be answered because it was under the authority of the Board. That's first -- this is the first time I've ever heard that statement. When was that? When did you come up with that one?
When did I come up with that one? I didn't come up with that one. That's the law.
I've never heard that phrase before.
Yeah, that's the law. Well, I'm just referring to the level at which you approve our budget, which is the category level.
Right.
And we now have an elected Board of Education, as you well know.
Right.
And it's their authority to, for instance, if we have a budget transfer from object to object, or even, I guess that's primarily it, object to object, that's -- that doesn't come to the council. That is just approved by the Board of Ed.
So now you're saying that the citizens should not ask the council, they should ask the Board? Is that what you're saying?
Well, I would hope that if they ask the council that you would refer them to the Board of Education.
So that's who we're -- that's who we have in front of us today, right?
Right.
The Board.
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions? Any other comments? Yes?
I have a question for the Board. So with Warwick Community College, they have, since the 11th and 12th grade classes are dual enrollment, that's the gifted and talented program, what is the compensation to Warwick for that?
I'm not sure I understand your question. Gifted and talented at Warwick?
She's talking about dual enrollment.
Oh, dual enrollment, that's not gifted and talented.
Oh, I'm sorry, but the last thing you had said that was gifted and talented for high school was dual enrollment.
No.
No, but she's talking about --
No. Okay. Dual enrollment, so Mr. --
I can --
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Stolper.
Can you ask that question one more time, Mrs. Ackley, so I make sure I'm understanding?
So it's a previous council meeting, you all had stated that gifted and talented at the high school, ninth grade through 12th grade, was done by dual enrollment through Warwick. And so my question is, what is the compensation rate for Warwick for having those students?
So the compensation rate, there's a dual enrollment agreement through Wycomico County Public Schools, and Warwick is relative Salisbury University and University of Maryland Eastern Shore. So the tuition rate is reduced by those institutions, roughly 25%. And then the cost that the Board pays the -- those institutions is 10% of that tuition cost. And then the student pays the other 90% of those tuition costs to the institution unless they're free and reduced meal students, and then it's just actually reversed. We would pick up as a Board 90% of those tuition costs, and the student would pay 10% of those reduced tuition costs.
But you still receive the full amount for that pupil per day?
The funding still does go from the state to the Board of Ed for that per-pupil FTE, yes.
And then the same, pretty much the same question with transition students through the age of 21?
Yes, that's correct as well.
So that would stay with the Board of Education?
Portions of that do. Mm-hmm.
Do we have any other questions? Any other comments from the Board of Education or any of your staff who are on Zoom? Okay?
Not at this point.
All right, great. Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Stay safe.
Any comments from council members as of right now in reference to the Board of Education? We will have a follow-up meeting. I'm assuming that the council president is going to have a follow-up meeting. We'll have to decide when. At least one more. Any questions in particular as of now? If not, I'm going to suggest that we will take a recess, a recess until 9:50. We're going to take a 20-minute recess until we have 10 o'clock with the state's attorney.
Well, the schedule got these gaps in it.
I think they just anticipated the amount of time it would take for each and --
I mean, between them. We got Board of Ed ending at 9:45, but we got State's Attorney starting at 10:00.
That's a good question.
And then we got State's Attorney ending at 10:20, and we got the executive starting at 10:30.
What we'll do is talk to Mrs. Hurley and see if we can't try to move a lot of these up. Hopefully, they'll all be, you know, sort of on hold anyway, waiting to come in, and we'll try to move this whole program up. I think we should be able to do it in two hours. Well, not two hours, but three maximum. All right, we'll recess for 20 minutes.
Well, Mr. Strasberg's on his way. He just wanted to go grab his mask.
I can email Jamie Dykes real quick and see if she can come over sooner.
That'd be great, Lynn.
I think we need to move all these up. Bill made a good point, too. We've got a 10-minute break in between -- well, we don't, Bill. We don't. We only seem to have them for the first two.
Yeah, the 10-minute break was just to give us some flexibility.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd rather have them waiting than, you know, we're turning a two-hour meeting into a four-hour meeting.
Mrs. Hurley, are all these department heads on call so that they can be given notice if it's half an hour earlier than originally scheduled?
They are on call, yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, I've just emailed Jamie, so I'll let you guys know if she can come sooner.
Thank you, Lynn.
I have a few questions for the fellow council members. Can we discuss the education requests?
Certainly.
So MSDE denied four of these requests. The executive denied all of them. Which ones can we -- I mean, if they're coming to us for the funds, but yet they can't give us information on what the actual cost is, I mean, wouldn't they just go to their board for it? I don't understand why they are coming to us for it.
Actually, that's not the case, Councilman. They said if you need the --
Their discretion for their board?
Yeah, she can hear you. You just have to speak into the microphone.
Well, I am. They stated if you need the actual numbers, they can give those. So they do have the numbers.
So they do have the numbers for the laptop carts and all that?
Right, they stated if, you know, it's at the Board of Ed level, but if you need that information. Mr. Stolper said he can make that available if you need that information.
Okay, all right. I just heard Dr. Hanlon say that was up to the discretion of the Board.
I think what she was referring to was to getting down to more in the nitty-gritty, or one item versus another, but Micah did say -- But they, Micah did say that if they could, they could show the bids, which would, could be helpful to see.
Any other questions?
And do they not have to show itemized budgets for the maintenance of efforts?
I, I think that's their categories that they have. I mean, that's the itemization that you're going to get.
They don't have them itemized for the maintenance of effort.
And I think that's what she's saying, that the Board of Ed actually approves.
I would think, if it eases anyone's conscious at all, conscience at all, I think I can speak for the council when I say I don't believe anyone in this room is going to cut this budget. Without question. If we were going to choose to do any one-time only, that would probably have to be at the expense of cuts that will be made in other areas of the county's budget. And that way, we would then know pretty much exactly what we might recommend as a transfer. So, those would be the first two steps we would take. Oh, those would be the first two, I think, items we would need to recognize.
I guess I was just looking at Warwick as they are requesting funding, but I'm questioning why they're requesting funding if they have the students from the public school system going to Warwick. So, parents are not only paying school tax, but they're also paying tuition for Warwick.
I don't have that answer specifically. Maybe it's. Excuse me?
You don't know, John?
That's one, that's one I don't know. Mr. Strasburg, how are you?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Before we get started, I just want to reiterate.
If you could get your mic as close as possible, it's getting even harder to hear. Thanks.
Before we get started, I just wanted to reiterate that our regret would occurred on Tuesday evening. And for those of you listening, I apologize.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. You have questions for me?
Questions from council?
Yeah. I know we had some conversations earlier.
Joe, get that mic right there. I know we had some conversations earlier. Because you requested questions, you know, to be sent in. Can you explain your thoughts on where do you think we should be in this budget as far as being cautious about what's going to happen in the next six months, year, two years? I know the budget was written before the COVID-19 thing came along, so it really doesn't reflect, you know, maybe where we're headed. We don't know where we're headed, I guess. The caution we should take in approving this budget as it's written.
I, I think I would respond to that by saying that.
Wayne, you got, really got to get close.
I'm sorry. I think I would respond to that by saying that Michelle Ennis is on a weekly call with the Mako Finance Officers affiliate. And what she is hearing from the finance officers around the state, from other counties, is that they are significantly increasing their contingency reserves. And I don't think there's any question but that the fiscal and economic environment in, in the country, the state, and the county is, is going to be, for lack of any better word, fluid. I think we're going to get some surprises along the way. So, what I would suggest is that any, any reductions that you anticipate or that you would like to make in departmental budgets, I would encourage you to send those cuts to contingency so that we've got a very strong contingency account so that as issues arise during the upcoming fiscal year, we have an available bank account, if you will, that we can go to in order to fund things that are necessary. I think our revenue estimates reflect the learning that we had at the time the budget was submitted. I think our property taxes are going to be fine. I think that our income, our local income taxes, because of the lag in state distributions and because of the nature of our local economy, I think we'll probably be looking at some pressure on local income taxes, probably in the fourth quarter of fiscal '21. So, to answer your question, Joe, first of all, I think it's a conservative budget to start with. Second of all, I think with what we know now and what we're looking at, caution is advised.
Do you agree or disagree that at some point in time, a lot of the money that's being passed down from the federal or state government could possibly dry up as far as coming to our local government? I know right now, it seems to be there's a bottomless pit of money. You know, we're getting the 18 million for the, for the airport, and I don't know what else, you know, is in the pipeline, but, you know, that can't go on forever.
Yeah, I'm, from my standpoint, this is just my own personal thought, I'm not anticipating further assistance and funding from the federal or the state government. To the contrary, I'm a bit concerned about what actions the state may take as a result of fiscal pressure on, on the state treasury. And we've talked about this before. I remain concerned about our disparity grant, and I remain concerned about highway user revenue. So, I don't think we should be anticipating or expecting additional funding, other than what we already know has been promised.
I know in the past, we lost highway revenue, highway user revenue, and they also passed part of the pension for what the Board of Ed downed to us.
Yes.
So, there's a possibility that we could see further pressures from.
Yes.
From those areas.
Yes.
And we don't get much highway user revenue now.
No, we don't.
You know, so, anyway.
Any other questions? We talked about this, nobody else is saying anything, so I'll talk. We talked about this earlier. Can you give me an update on what the thoughts are on the Pittsfield Library project?
Executive Culver was fully prepared to move forward with the repurposing of the building that we spoke of, Joe. And we have been asking for a conceptual floor plan that would identify the space needs of a Pittsfield branch, and we've not gotten anything in detail. We did get an email that was proposing, I'm going by memory, a 6,600-square-foot building, but without any detail. So, I don't think Executive Culver is going to be prepared to move forward until he can get comfortable with the planned utilization of that branch and what it would look like, how big it needs to be, et cetera. When we have that, then we could forecast what it may cost to build it. So, he hasn't closed the door on a Pittsfield branch. As a matter of fact, he would like to see that move forward. But it has to move forward in a practical manner, and particularly given what you just said, you know, I think we need to be very, very cautious with capital spending as we go forward.
Well, we, the plan was, for anybody that's watching this and don't know, was to remodel a leased building. And then, apparently, is it the library board that doesn't agree with that, or?
Yes.
So, the library board, they want a new building instead of a leased building, and the lease was what going to be for 10 years?
I think it was a 10-year lease, Joe.
Yeah, so that we would talk about, if you were going to do a new building, you would talk, what, six or eight years before probably you could even break ground, or it would come into conception, or what? If you were going to do a new building?
Well, we'd have.
I mean, if it was in the budget today to start a new building?
Yeah, we'd have to find land, first of all. You know, we'd have to have architectural plans done, we'd have to have construction plans done, we'd have to bid it out, and then we'd have to find the funding for it. And again, you know, I, I continue to encourage caution with regard to significant capital expenditures, because we don't know what the environment's going to be like for the foreseeable future. So, taking on new debt for new projects is something that I'm not totally comfortable with.
Okay, yeah. And I think the folks around Pittsfield were well satisfied with the initial plans of doing a lease and.
That was the impression that I had, Joe.
Okay. Okay. Go ahead, John. Mr. Strasburg, something we have touched on, you and I have touched on before, is if you go through the budget, I think something, she has a continuing or a constant increase in pretty much every department is hospitalization. Some of it's in the, in the amount of 33% increases. So, I was wondering what was the driving force behind those, those, the increases in hospitalization in each individual department?
I think at the time that the budget was prepared, the quote that we had gotten from Care First for our health insurance called for a 16.5% premium increase. And that's, and that's strictly driven by our claims experience. Since that time, our employees have worked with Mark Lynn at Bolton Partners, and that current proposed increase is now 8.9%. And that assumes that we wouldn't make any changes to any of the benefits, you know, increase copays, that type of thing. So, so that number has come down. But I think that, again, as, as, as we look forward, health costs for everybody in this country are, are going to, I think, significantly increase. We have no idea at all what the costs of this COVID pandemic are going to do with regard to insurers. You know, that money has to come from someplace. And I, I think that, I think that we need to be very, very, again, careful, and I think we have been, with our health insurance renewals. And I think that we need to be mindful that those costs will likely continue to increase, and it's simply because of the health of the population that we're dealing with.
So, it could, it could possibly be anywhere from 8%, 9% to 16% increase in reality?
I, I would, you know, and I'm, I'm not as close to this as, as Michelle or Ruth Ann are, but I would.
Jamie, how are you?
Yes.
Mayor Maney? The reason why you can do a transition different rates of hospitalization, they do, is because you can have employees retiring.
Who is it?
We don't, excuse me.
I can't hear.
We're not sure, we're not sure who's talking.
It's Michelle Ennis.
Can we turn this up? I can't hear anything.
Yeah, we're having a hard time with the audio, Michelle.
Try it now. Go ahead.
Are you there?
Mayor Maney?
Yes.
The reason why you can do a rate of increase in hospitalization is because if you have a department or mention employees retiring, we now have to pay for your hospitalization as a retiree and the cover for the new employee. So, that's why you may see different rates of hospitalization from the department. Every position is accounted for in the tax.
Thank you.
Can you repeat what she said, Wayne? I still didn't hear.
It's, that, this gets very technical, and I think that Michelle could provide you with a written response that would explain what's happening with health insurance, and she could probably explain what she believes will continue to occur with health insurance as we move forward.
That's fine.
Can you hear me twice now, then I'll have the mic?
Yes.
I agree that with health insurance, if you have employees retiring, we must pay for their health insurance as a retiree and now cover health insurance for a new employee.
Right.
So, if you see a department increase by 33%, it's a good possibility that there is a retiring, which we're going to cover the retirement coverage, and a new employee that is replacing that position.
Understood.
Health insurance is accounted for by position.
Understood.
But that wasn't, that's the way it's always been, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
I think with the age of our workforce, you're going to see, a living example, you're going to see people retiring. And as Michelle said, those retiring employees will continue to receive health benefits, albeit under a different plan. The replacement employee will also then receive health benefits. So, the ongoing costs associated with health are going to be going up because of what Michelle just said, and also just simply because of the health of the population. And, and we know that the Lower Eastern Shore of Maryland, from a health standpoint, is, is certainly not as healthy a population as, say, the state is as a whole. Higher rate of cancer here, higher rate of diabetes here.
On the positive side about that, I guess, if, if nothing else, it is, it is noteworthy that folks aren't, you know, you're not allowed to go to the, well, until last week, you couldn't have an elective, elective procedure. So, the, this question's been going on for a while, is what, how is this going to affect health insurance and the general cost, or what are we going to see for premiums for the coming year? If anything, if there is any bright spot, which there really isn't in a lot of this, but it is that, at least with people not going to the doctor now, they're, you know, at least they're deferring for the coming year or not receiving procedures that they would have.
That's, that's unless you need it done.
Yeah.
It's not a very bright spot if you need it done.
No, it's really, it's, it's only a budgetary bright spot for early snare.
The other thing I had in the executive's office, you have, you have an additional $128,000 budgeted for a CFO, Chief Financial Officer? And my question would be, I guess, how is it with the fact that the executive oversees all departments and has access to a finance department as a whole? Why there would be any, why it would be necessary to, in addition to that department, that we also have a Chief Financial Officer in the executive's department?
I think, John, that A, most counties across the state, particularly the counties that have larger budgets than our budget is growing, have a separate Office of Budget Management. And coming out of the, coming out of the private sector, I was very used to seeing budget, treasury, and accounting separated. There's, there's a good check and balance reason for that. And we've spoken, we've spoken with Executive Culver over the past year, actually more than the past year, about establishing an Office of Budget Management. The executive also, and, you know, I was not in those discussions, but I think Josh may have been in the discussion with Councilman Dodd, with Executive Culver, and in those mediation discussions with Legit, I think that was an, a, an idea that Bob put forward, and I think Councilman Dodd and Councilman Hastings were receptive to that.
Yeah, to be, to be clear, this is one we brought back. We, we did mention from that meeting with Legit that that would be an idea, that's something that we could talk over, and seemed like the council was fully on board with it.
Seemed like it was fully on board with it.
I said, didn't seem like, did not seem like the council was fully on board with it after we brought it back. we brought it back to all the folks, but it was a good positive discussion when we did have.
Well, Wayne, I'm sorry. You keep saying as our budget grows, that's one reason it's growing, when you come up with, when we come up with stuff like that, so, anyway. I try to be smart, just, you know.
But I would respond to that. It was my experience over the years, Joe, that if you had an effective Office of Budget Management, they actually paid for themselves. But that's, you know, that's organizational theory.
Who is our, do we have a, do we have a finance director at the moment? Do we have a finance director at the moment?
Yes, yes, we do.
A confirmed finance director?
Council obviously has not confirmed a finance director, but we have a finance director.
We don't have, we don't have that problem taken care of at the moment, so.
Yeah, I just, I ran into somebody this weekend that asked me why the executive's budget was almost a million dollars. I think this was somebody who was around on the first days of when they were very actively trying to decide whether or not to even add that department, and costs were considered to be a major part of it. So, they had some dismay at the fact that the, and I recognized, you know, costs increase everywhere, but they were concerned that we now had a branch of government that was almost a million dollars.
Well, you'll recall that the accounting over the years has significantly changed as well. So, the budget, you can't compare a budget from 2018, or 2019, or 2020, to a budget from whatever year this individual may have been talking about, because the accounting is much different. And the accounting, quite frankly, better reflects reality of the costs of each department. For instance, we never used to charge departments for health coverage. It was consolidated on a different line in the budget.
Right.
So, when you look back at older budgets, you're really looking at a budget by department that did not really reflect reality. That said, I think this budget, and I've read through this budget, I've looked at it, I think it's a, I think it's a good, a good solid budget. And I was comfortable with it being put forward in its, in its present form, and happy to discuss questions that you all may have, but...
I think it just, it sort of comes to surprise to some people that the, the increase in the executive's budget this year is about 36% alone. It's a pretty large increase. And I understand your discussion, because I think that was a good move you made when you transferred the real costs that were anticipated to that individual department as opposed to, you know, all the benefits being in a separate category. But all that being said, I think there are, it's a large increase this year overall.
Are you done, John?
Yes.
Wayne, the airport, our 18 million. Federal government's generous. And I know there's extra money in the budget for the airport. Do you think we can safely do something else with that as far as moving in contingency and use the 18 million for operating and capital for the next four years, or what?
Our, yes, our airport folks are going to be in here, I forget what time they're coming in, but we've had ongoing discussions with the FAA, and we've gotten very good guidance about how we can utilize that 18.2 million dollars. And we've gotten guidance that we can utilize that money for the operation and maintenance of the airport for the next four years, retroactive to January 1 of this year. So, we could, we've done those calculations, and we think that that would still leave about $8 million for the airport to utilize on capital projects that we have in the CIP. The caution that we have to exercise here is that after those four years, we're going to have to live with the recurring costs that we have taken on in the next four years. So, I would urge us to be very careful with the growth of airport operational spending and maintenance, even though that money...
You mean out of our budget?
Even though that money's free money, because at some point in time, it's going to be coming from county coffers. But Tony, Tony Calvin and Matt will show you in detail what we propose to do with that funding. So, that was, that was a huge, huge benefit. And frankly, I was extremely pleased that our FAA office over in Dulles, the grant manager over there has been very, very helpful and very, very flexible in terms of how the FAA is allowing us to utilize those funds. It's a huge benefit to the county.
So, is this a case of you have to use it in four years or lose it?
As it stands now, Joe, yes. But remember, we can use it for operating and maintenance and capital.
Right.
Capital projects. And we've got, what they want in terms of capital projects are essentially projects that are shovel-ready or near shovel-ready. And we're well positioned to make use of those funds, so...
So, would you be comfortable if we, you know, in our budget process, if we, any money that was put far from the county to go to the airport for operating, our capital, will we remove that and just use the 18 million?
Yes. And, but again, I would caution that I think particularly from the, from the operating standpoint, I would, I wouldn't remove it from the budget, I would move it to contingency.
Okay, that's what, that's what we have to do with everything, I guess.
Understood, okay.
One question I have, I will be meeting with the State's Attorney in about five minutes. And evidently, the two positions that the council approved more recently here, actually we approved three, but the, the executive chose not to fund those positions. Can you maybe help us out with a little bit, enlighten us?
I think, John, that that is a function of, it's a function of a couple of things. First of all, we are, again, trying to be very cautious with recurring spending as we go forward. Second of all, we're not quite sure, the court system is going to be backed up, it's already backed up tremendously. And we're not sure when those positions would actually be needed. But again, when we get to the juncture that we say, no, we really need to fund those positions and get those people in place, that money could come out of contingency. So, that was Executive Culver's thought in that regard.
Mr. Vice President, can I just ask one question?
Yes, surely.
For the, going back to the CFO position, I just want to clarify, this is not a new position in the Paying Classification Plan?
Right.
Is this a position that was previously in the Finance Department, and you're just moving it to the Executive's Office? Is that correct?
I think it's in position control, and I think we put it forward a couple of years ago. But again, I'll have to defer to Michelle on that, and I can get back.
I just want to clarify, we just didn't need any new legislation?
No, I don't believe you do. I think it exists.
Okay.
It's a matter of funding.
Okay. Any other, yes, good, Joe. The county roads, you're seeing about a million dollar decrease in that. Is, how's that going to affect the paving? And I, I guess, we'll go back to, you know, the caution we've been talking about. And I know we've seen a decrease in fuel costs, I know we haven't bought salt this year.
Excuse me?
Good, good. Finish your questions, Joe.
I was trying to. So, we see, we've seen this, I was wondering how that's going to affect, if you've seen any effect of that?
I think that's really a question that Mr. Whitelock should answer when he comes in. I forget when he's in this afternoon.
After lunch.
Yeah, after lunch sometime.
Yeah, we can, we can discuss that after lunch. That'd be fine. Thank you, Mr. Strasburg.
Sure.
Any other questions for Mr. Strasburg?
I'm sure we'll think of some later.
All right, thank you very much.
I'm next door.
Thank you.
Ladies, gentlemen.
It's 10 o'clock, we're at the State's Attorney's Office?
Yes.
Good morning.
Good morning. Safely distanced?
Is it good?
Or should I give these to you?
How's Jamie?
I'm sorry, how's Jenny?
Jamie.
Oh, I'm good.
I said Jamie.
Okay. I didn't think you were seen out of nowhere.
Headed in that direction.
So, we are well, thank you, thank you. How about the council?
It's because you hadn't had anything to do, right? What are they doing with criminal and civil cases right now? Are they still, are any of those being adjudicated, if that's the correct term?
Not adjudicated?
No.
So, we have nothing going to trial or resolution.
Right.
Right now, basically, all we're doing are bond reviews in the circuit and district court. Obviously, new cases are still coming in, so there's just incredible backlog from what's coming in and a lack of being able to adjudicate. The district court just started doing preliminary hearings, so that should help move at least some of that backlog at least up to the circuit court. And there's some talk now that the district court might start taking resolutions of things that we know are pleas and that kind of thing. And so, the hope is that maybe we can start alleviating some of the pressure on the district court system.
Mr. McDermott, if you can make sure you're speaking for Brett and Leah to the microphone.
And you have to get close.
Okay.
See, if you give a mouse a cookie, you guys give us this nice table with these microphones, we don't have to go up and I'm already leaning back.
Well, welcome. We know that there are some different, some requests that have been made over and above the regular. Those are probably 90% of the questions that the council would have either today or even in reviewing the budgets on our own time. So, we would just appreciate if you could just give us a quick overview of where you see the needs for increases and your justification, you know, as succinctly as possible, that'd be great.
Of course, of course. Thank you for the opportunity to be here this morning. This has been an unusual year, as we all wear masks for a lot of different reasons. One of those was that I was unable to meet with the county executive regarding my budget, and I had hoped to before we met here today. So, I'm here asking you to fully fund, as our Prosecution Integrity Unit creation had overwhelming support, and I don't do so lightly, understanding the cost to other offices and departments in the county. As we've relayed on prior occasions, it's necessary to ensure the public safety interest and the integrity of our system. In front of you, on the third page, we've, in preparation, after becoming aware of the county executive's election not to fund the Prosecution Integrity Unit, we looked at Criminal Procedure Article 15423 of the Maryland Annotated Code. That is a statute that provides for and addresses funding for the Office of the State's Attorney. Notably, except for all positions, personnel positions and expenses other than prosecutors, our office need only submit a voucher for all expenses deemed necessary. So, if that first two pages is that voucher, if the council decides that it cannot fund the Prosecution Integrity Unit in its entirety. I do not have the authority to issue vouchers for prosecutor positions, but under the statute, I have authority to issue vouchers for any and all other expenses. So, that is only if the money cannot be found. I understand budgetary constraints. I mean, we are in unprecedented times. And we do that as a last resort to protect the integrity of the office and the community. That statute is attached, as is on the third and fourth pages, a advice from the Office of the Attorney General that we received on Friday regarding their opinion as to that Criminal Procedure Article Section. And then beyond that is an opinion of the Office of the Attorney General 95025 for your reading. I would note, one of the most important things of that Attorney General opinion is, for the reasons stated below, we conclude as follows. A county must provide the State's Attorney with sufficient resources so that the State's Attorney retains prosecutorial discretion for all significant cases. To the extent that the budget provided to your office compelled you to forego investigations, prosecutions for several significant types of offenses, it falls short of the legal requirement imposed on, and in that case, it was Prince George's County. So, I'd be, we'd be happy to answer whatever questions that you have. I do not, I want to be brief and respectful of your time understanding. We've taken a lot of your time recently.
Have you shared this with the executive office, would you just share with us?
Not as of yet.
This morning, we did.
You did.
So, yeah, I'm sorry, Mr. Wilbur called this morning. We'd had, I'd had a conversation with Ms. Ennis on Friday. That was when we got the Attorney General's opinion. And Mr. Wilbur called this morning, I sent this all over to him.
So, at the end of the day, are you basically saying that you can transfer your funds within the State's Attorney's Office without council approval? Or are you saying, which I think is, that's what this says?
That is what the opinion is.
Which is fine, I mean, that's fine with me. I mean, but I try and get clarification, but are you, at the end of the day, asking for, quote, additional funds, or asking to make sure the funds that are being allocated are going to be allocated?
So, the Prosecution Integrity Unit funding would be all new funding that is not in, currently in our budget. That is, that is all new funding. We do not have those funds available. I will note that we did have and had requested a reallocation of $32,000 in January, which was not afforded us, and that money was not given to us in our budget. So, had, we would have that $32,000 to at least partially fund an investigator, but we no longer have that money in our budget at all.
The last paragraph sounds to me like they're saying that if the county elects not to fund particular positions, that the state could possibly supersede county authority?
I believe that's what it says.
Sort of sounds like to me. I'm not, look, I'm not arguing with them, I'm just trying to get a clarification, because that's, it's kind of what it sounds like.
Sure.
And I know it's not a veiled threat or anything like that, it's just simply what they are sending to us.
Yes, I think the, both the letter from Ms. Schiff, who's an Assistant Attorney General now, she's the person who represents State's Attorneys generally, and then also coupled with the Attorney General's opinions, stands for the proposition that the state statute preempts or supersedes, as they call it, what would be the county code's provisions. And so, under, you know, either 705, either in your subsection D, or if you're in your subsection F, the council can't add to the budget. And that's something I know everybody in the room is familiar with. What this statute says, and why it's so interesting, is we can't do anything about the ASA positions, but with respect to any other need, pens, papers, or secretaries, or investigators, the office is allowed to simply submit a voucher to the county and say, this is what we need, we deem it necessary, and the county has to fund it, which is where that language that Ms. Stikes read into the record comes from in that Attorney General's opinion, because, and as the Attorney General's opinion lays out, and I think we should be clear too, the best route is never the legal route, the one we're talking about. In that opinion, it says, like, the best way to do it is to have... In that opinion, it says, like, the best way to do it is to have conversations and to have government kind of come to an agreement.
Sure. Did you say that they could not do it in the case of the two prosecutors?
Yeah, so, can I draw your attention to, I'll do it quickly. If you look at 15423, that's the statute that we're talking about. The first section, which is B1, salary and-
Where is that, if you could?
Yep.
It's the third page.
Okay, all right, 15423, I'm there.
Okay, so if you look at the second bolded, salary and expenses of office, B1, that spells out the voucher system under specifically B2. What's different, however, is assistant state's attorneys. That's a different section. And you'll note there, that's where your authority is very clear. C1, subject to the terms, conditions, and salaries as approved by the county council, the state's attorney may appoint assistant state's attorneys, et cetera. So, what the statute says is, for ASAs, we have to come to you and you have to approve the terms, conditions, and salary. For all other expenses, we can simply submit a voucher. Now, that's not, it's the last resort, right? It's the absolute last resort for an office that thinks that this is absolutely necessary, but it does afford us that opportunity if government doesn't fund.
Got you.
This is done just so, in the case of counsel or an executive basically wants to disintegrate up a state's attorney's office, you know, so it protects the, you know, it protects the integrity of the state's attorney's office and so make sure we have one, I guess, so does that, you know?
You know, our office is so, our obligations are so clear, in, to us, you know, to prosecutors, they're not always clear to other aspects of government or politicians. Our office, it's my position, and I don't think that the legislature ever intended for our office to be beholden to one person. And that's for all of our protection.
Any other questions?
Jamie, you make a very good point there. Is this something that we need to change in our charter?
I don't want, I didn't realize you were there, Councilwoman Ackley.
There's a lot of people out there.
Oh, my God. I'm gonna start tossing in.
So, I do not want to be in the position of giving the counsel legal advice, but I think you, I think it's pretty clear and it was clear to the legislature when they enacted the criminal procedure article that where funding should, in a last resort sense, come from.
Wayne was just in here, and he made the statement, was it you or somebody asked a question about, you know, this funding? And he says, under the veil of caution-
Mr. Holloway.
Under the veil of caution, I think he, you know, that this, we have, we're gonna have money in the reserve fund, and then when this money was needed, that we could do the transfer. One of the reasons is all the courts are closed, and I did read in the paper that, you know, this investigation's kind of put on hold because of the COVID-19. Is that correct, or?
So, I was surprised to read that, because that is not how I would characterize where we are.
Okay.
Where we are is that we have continued, my office, the Salisbury Police Department, the Office of the Public Defender, the Maryland State Police have all continued to work towards the approval of, and it has just been approved, an RFP for the project manager to get started at the Salisbury Police Department. So, that hiring, that selection will take place in late June. So, nothing has been put on, I would not characterize it as being put on hold. We are still working towards solutions. I, and I anticipate that in the month of July, we will all be ready to get over there and dig in to that property room. I don't have the resources to do that as we speak.
Well, your prosecutors or your investigators, they need, kind of need to be in on the ground floor of this, don't they?
Yes, yes, they would, I mean-
They're gonna be walking in the door later with, okay, what's happened so far, you know, with that question, or?
We cannot be playing catch-up that way. I mean, the courts will expect, the community will expect that we, and the Maryland State Police, as they drafted the strategic plan, indicated that in terms of integrity and independence, our office needed to be present.
I think part of the thought process was that they were assuming that these prosecutors were immediately going to be going to trial, but I don't think, and that wasn't gonna happen until September or, you know, October. But I think that's nowhere near the case. I believe there's a lot of prep work that has to be done before anything even goes near a courtroom. Am I right?
Yes, absolutely. So, we will, while these cases may not go to trial that are eventually overturned, you know, they may not go to trial until the later part of the year. They will have motions hearings, there will be post-conviction hearings that all need to be litigated ahead of time, whether or not juries are impaneled and allowed to sit. Do you have anything else to add, Mr. McDermott?
Just to that point, we are responding to those, even though we're not going to court, we're currently responding to a flood of motions that are coming in on these particular cases. So, yes, we're not going to court to litigate them, but our prosecutors, and quite frankly, it's not our prosecutors, because we couldn't spread it amongst the prosecutors who already had the caseloads that they do. So, there's about four of us right now within the office that are tasked with responding, drafting these motions, drafting a playbook, a battle book, how to respond to these motions. Each one is unique, and so, we're still doing, we're still currently, right now, every single day, receiving motions and doing work on it.
Yeah, and I really just, believe me, I'm a novice. I'm nowhere near involved in what you do, but I would think that 50 to 75% of these are probably never gonna see a courtroom.
Yeah, I think that's probably a fair, that's probably fair, well, I shouldn't say that.
You can tell me I'm wrong.
Yeah, yeah. Well, the caveat is this, right? Like, I think everybody who files one of these motions is probably going to see a courtroom. To the extent that it's going to be a short, quick hearing where they're allowed to have their say, have their day in court, that'll be fine.
I got you.
Those that get to, like, a trial situation or, like, substantive litigation, your number's probably far more accurate.
That's really more of what I was thinking.
Yes, sir.
The full-blown court case is gonna be probably much more limited.
Yes.
It's gonna be a lot, as you said, it's gonna be a lot more of the discussions ahead of time, trying to come to some type of agreement.
Yes.
So, you are still getting a lot of cases that are coming in?
We are.
Challenges, I guess, if you can call them challenges?
It's funny, it's not, I shouldn't say funny. It's, the way in which it's happening is, obviously, we sent out our disclosures. Some of those disclosures had to go to defendants, because they're no longer represented by attorneys. Those defendants are taking their own set time period to respond, to get representation. And so, it's, it started off as a flood, and now it's just kind of a steady stream of people who are on their own timeline, either getting lawyers or filing their own motions pro se.
Any other questions? Any comments you wanted to make?
No, I just appreciate your hard work in these difficult times and your understanding of our need and the importance.
Well, at the end of budget deliberations, I guess you'll call them, I think we all make different decisions and have different ideas, but I'd like to see us put the recommendation forward to the county executive that they go ahead and fund this.
Yeah.
And that'll be up to the counsel, you know, the rest of the counsel, so.
And to familiarize you with our process, again, the council's responsibility, if we choose to do so, would be a recommendation. It's not as if we can, if we can, you know, write that line item in and say, here's what you're gonna get. We can only make that recommendation to the executive branch and hopefully, they will see fit to consider it. Okay?
Thank you.
Very good, thank you.
Great, thank you very much for coming in.
Thanks.
Mr. Vice President, we do have IT and purchasing on the Zoom call, I believe. If you want to proceed with them next.
That'd be great. Thank you, Mrs. Hurley.
You're welcome.
Okay, we have Mr. Monar here, as well as Mr. Strasburg. Good afternoon, or good morning.
Good morning, Aldean.
Doing great, thank you. Hang on a second, I'm just trying to get things in order here. If you could, Mr. Monar, we are just trying to, for the most part with departments, when we see, you know, extreme differences in expenses, we just try to get a one-on-one review with the actual department head to assess the true needs of those increases. If you would mind, if we could just familiarize with us, familiarize us with that and what your, what your train of thought is.
Okay, no problem. Is there any particular line item that you're looking at?
I think part of it, thank you, was number 15, there were increases in computer software support. And the one that surprised me, actually, was telephone landlines. Of course, in, I guess, in some of the areas, that's almost, we're never gonna get rid of that, just based on what has to be, what sort of information has to go through the landlines.
So, telephone landlines, if you're looking at in my, in my budget, those increases from last year have to deal with some new internet services. We're bringing online a couple facilities, three facilities in particular, what we call the public work campus out on Brick Hill Road, Civic Center, and then here at the Government Office Building. So, we're adding Maryland-Duit connections at the public work campus, which incorporates solid waste, roads, parks, and, without care, general service. So, what we're doing is, we're trying to put a main internet connection out there for that campus, and then also Civic Center, we're bringing in a Maryland-Duit internet connection there. At those two locations, the only thing we have right now is Comcast's connection. So, we're creating a alternate internet service so that any public situation and Comcast is out, which has happened in the past, we are online at those locations. And then at GOB, we upgrade the internet service here. So, that's an increase in that particular line line.
So, that's what's technically, as opposed to where people are thinking, maybe broadband's still all coming in wireless, some of it is coming in hardwired, right? Through landlines?
Correct, yeah. It's actually, the Maryland-Duit connection come in via fiber.
Fiber.
It's still labeled telephone and landline in the budget, but most of that is all internet services actually.
Okay. I guess the question, Mr. Strasburg, I had always agreed, I had always agreed with your policy where you transferred benefits from the actual category of benefits, and you applied that to the individual departments. Would there be any need, or would it be simply a nightmare, an absolute nightmare, with a lot of the costs, I guess, Mr. Monar was discussing on the increases to IT? Would it make any sense to transfer those exact costs to the individual departments, just as you had done prior with the health benefits?
John, that's really a finance question. I think it would probably be an accounting nightmare, but I'll leave it to Michelle.
That's what I thought. We could always send that out as an email request. I'd also thought about the same thing about general services, you know, but you're thinking, you know, you charge somebody for going and changing a lightbulb, you know, at one point in time, so that would-
Any other questions?
From an accounting perspective, without allocation base, it would not be any hassle from an accounting perspective.
I have a question for Mr. Monar. For here, you have MUNIS, has training external for MUNIS?
Yeah.
Is that open, is that, is that what, Michelle, maybe you could answer it too, is open for all employees to learn how to use MUNIS?
It's actually, that training program is something we're starting right now. It's continuing professional development and any kind of new modules or retraining for new employees. It's actually a program we use throughout the year, where we schedule training sessions, remote training sessions for our employees. What we have is we have a pool of hours that we can use throughout the year.
Okay.
It's on the different modules we use.
All right, thank you.
Is this training for your department, Mr. Monar?
No, that's county-wide.
Okay.
You might have meant, I would say you might have mentioned it while I was taking a drink of water, but the, what was the reason, the computer software support, the 92,000? You might have said that already, I know you started to. The increase in about 92,017%?
Okay, computer software support.
Yeah.
The increase there is mainly due to two modules in MUNIS that we now have. The two modules are a bankrupt affiliation module and a cashiering module. Bankrupt affiliation, these are two modules that we've added. So, moving forward, the annual support, along with the annual increase that we see every year with our MUNIS contract, now we've added two modules, so that support significantly went up next year. That was the majority of the increase now. We have some other increases in there, which we have our email archiving, which we're renewing, so we haven't had that for years, so that's come up. And we have new endpoint security software, which we also haven't had in the past three years, so that's come in and we've changed products to that. That's why you see a significant increase in that.
Thank you.
I guess, not to sound too repetitive, but those costs did not sound like those are costs that the IT department should be absorbing.
Well, it's, that's the, it's always been under our budget. The MUNIS contract has always been under the IT budget.
The allocation base, the allocation base should not continue to be properly allocated, so it is the county software, MUNIS is our financial and software along-
Financial permitting.
Permitting, along with other software, so if that means it's under one umbrella.
And all departments, all departments are using-
Correct, it's the county ERP system.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I just have one quick question.
Yes, yes, Ms. Hurley.
For the capital other, in the amount of 60,000, what is that for, John?
Okay, the majority of that is for the fiber optic connections going into the Civic Center and to the public work campus for the new Maryland-Duit internet fiber. So, we're, it's a one-time capital expense to build the fiber optic network from the existing spurs that Duit has near the facility, that we have to construct and have that put into the facility, the actual fiber itself.
Any other questions? Mr. Monar, thank you very much. If you, do you have any other comments?
No, that's it. Thanks for having me.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good week.
Thanks, Sean.
Mr. Strasburg, since you're here in the, oh, we put Nick here already, great, wonderful. Ms. Hurley, you've done a good job. All right, Nick?
Morning.
Good morning. I think one question we had for purchasing over to above everything else was the leased vehicles. We're really trying to get an idea of how this is coming out to play as far as whether it's cost-effective for the county. It's still very early on, I believe, but, you know, just trying to see how it's going. It's, obviously, we're leasing an awful lot of vehicles and have over the last year.
Yes, we're going into year three now with FY21. I would say the program has been working great so far, but you are correct. I think when we first discussed this a couple years ago, we're really going to have all the data after year five. So that, I think at year five, we'll do a really hard rough into the expenses and how it worked versus how we did previously. But in a short period of time, we have been able to remove a lot of our older vehicles. Like I said, when they started this program, our average fleet was probably a whole. So we, we've done a really good job of getting rid of those vehicles that were requiring a lot of maintenance, engine repairs, and those types of things. So far, so good. Enterprise has also started selling some of our vehicles. Some of those older ones that don't have a lot of value, we've just stepped over and put the auction those off the way that we didn't have. But with these, once we start selling some of these newer vehicles, Enterprise will be able to bring back more money to the county by being able to reach a larger audience in the car market. So for the most part, the departments have loved it. As I said, they've got their older vehicles, and they've been able to have a more reliable fleet so far without having to spare the majority of the cost.
Okay. So the sales of the vehicles, because I know that was a part of the, part of the pitch that they made initially as far as the benefits to the program, that we would be getting probably a, a, a good deal on the, the sale of these. You are referencing the leased vehicles only, not the current vehicles in, in our, in our inventory?
No, they are handling the sale of our own vehicles as well. Once we get to the point of them selling the leased vehicles yet, they'll do that as well. But it's our responsibility to look and see how much vehicles we think they bring in. As a general rule, some we, if it's over $1,000 in value and we have that handled, they'll pay away. They, also, we have the final say. They'll tell us what the offer on the vehicle was. If we like that offer, we say yes, and then they're going to check that, handling that sale too.
Okay. Any other questions, Percy? Any, any comments, Nick, you'd like to add?
No, thanks for having me. And like I said, we'll love to look at this down the road and go from there.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Nick.
Thanks, Nick.
The next item on the agenda was with the airport at 11:30, but I'm assuming we're not there yet, right?
No, I do have Public Works arriving early, so as soon as he arrives.
Did you want to talk to Mr. Strasberg about community promotions?
Yeah. Yes, I just looked through the agenda as is right now. And Mr. Strasberg, and I apologize because you had requested emails ahead of time. So this is a question I'll approach to you, and if you would like to defer and get back to me, I, I can understand that. I was concerned on the 48% increase in community promotions, just trying to get an idea of what that was. I believe part of it was from 29,000 to 43,000. But again-
I think Michelle sent an email about that.
Do we have an email, Mrs. Hurley?
What was the question again?
Community promotions, as far as the increases.
Does that cover our Mako expenses for both the executive and council? This next year, there was an increase in cost because Mako is now handling the SOWI survey for all government personnel.
Yeah. Councilwoman Ackley actually asked that question last Friday. It was part of her response.
Okay, great. Great. All right. Got to get caught up on my emails.
Wait.
Yes, Josh?
To be clear, the, the Mako cost is, can you say that again? The Mako cost was going up?
Mako is now, they're outsourcing the SOWI safety surveys that they can use here for government. So there's an additional cost to that because they can outsource a little company to collect all that data. You know, the annual survey that shows you here's your position and benefits. But usually internally, now they're going external with it, so there's additional cost to it. They'll be a little bit.
Thank you.
That's a big call, I mean.
It's a huge increase.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it is at least, what, 17,000 to 20,000 dollars, why, we guys have to do it first. And then I guess they keep on, going to keep it outsourced. But they do it every government in the county, and it's a very large survey and very beneficial and often utilized.
Does that comprise of all the cost of community promotions? Or is there other things that, can you describe that's involved in that?
The Chamber of Commerce is also in community promotion for both bodies of government and also other businesses.
The Chamber of Commerce?
Yeah.
Membership? To the Chamber?
I'm glad to tell you more about exactly how this is being based on the current.
I didn't know we were paying for membership for the Chamber of Commerce.
It could be for lunches, seminars, meetings.
Well, we've got $1,000 in our, in our budget for Chamber of Commerce.
The events for the Chamber of Commerce does come out of the council's budget for you guys to attend.
And they attend.
That would come out of their budget.
Okay, any other questions for Mr. Strasberg? Are we going to take a recess, Mrs. Hurley?
Yeah, I would suggest probably like a 15-minute recess.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Strasberg.
Thanks.
A recess for 15 minutes.